I would like to call to order the November tenth, two thousand and twenty regular school board meeting of the Columbia Heights Public School District. If you are able, would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, before we get going, I'd like to redo something about our digital meeting here tonight. Due to the current federal and state emergency declarations in the Minnesota Directive to Residents to Stay Home and Guidance about limiting person-to-person contact due to the COVID-19 coronavirus pandemic, this meeting of the Columbia Heights Public School Board is being conducted in accordance with Minnesota Statutes thirteen D point zero two one, meetings by telephone or other electronic means. School board members are reminded to mute their microphone or phone when they are not speaking. School board members wishing to speak should raise their hand and then wait to be recognized by the chair. The chair will determine the order in which board members wishing to speak will be recognized. When recognized, the board member should unmute the microphone or device. All votes are unmute, sorry, unmute the microphone or phone, speak then mute their device. All votes will be conducted by roll call and each school board member should wait until their name is called before voting. This meeting is being recorded and access to the recording will be made available on the school district's website as soon as reasonably possible. All right, Molly, would you please do roll call?
Thank you, Chair Severson.
Here.
Larkin.
Here.
A Samurai.
Here.
Palmer.
Here.
Lewis, here, Superintendent Stenvik.
Here.
Thank you.
I think Molly, you do have to, Don, correct me if I'm wrong, does she have to read Lorian's name?
My apologies. Mueller.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
No problem. All right, well, we will move on to our mission statement. Our mission statement is creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed. And our core values are community excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. We will move on to agenda approval adjustments, announcements, and correspondence. First up is the approval of the agenda. Could I get a motion to move that forward, please?
So move.
That's John, second.
Second.
That's Laura on the second, any discussion? Since I'm toggling between the screens, feel free to shout out if I don't see your hand raised. All right, hearing none, we'll move to a roll call vote.
Severson.
Aye.
Larkin.
Unmute, John.
It says I'm not, aye?
Oh, yeah, there it is.
A Samurai.
Aye.
Palmer.
Aye.
Lewis, aye.
All right, motion carries. I'll move on to announcements. On November twelfth and thirteenth, thirteenth, Friday, there's no school. November twelfth, Thursday at five thirty PM, there will be a canvassing meeting via electronic means. On November seventeenth, Tuesday at five PM, the school board work session will be in the community room and via electronic means. On November twenty fourth, Tuesday at six PM, there'll be a special call meeting on the mid, uh, mid-year superintendent evaluation in the community room and via electronic means. On Tuesday, November twenty fourth, at seven PM, there will be a regular school board meeting in the community room and via electronic means. On November twenty sixth and twenty seventh, there is no school. All right, we'll move on to the correspondence. Superintendent Stenvik, is there any correspondence this, tonight?
Madam Chair members, there is no correspondence at this time.
All right, thanks. We will move on then to communications from the board. At this time, any, or to the board, excuse me. At this time, any citizen or employee may briefly address the school board. The board will listen to the brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request that administration follow-up. The board will not take action on, at this meeting on request presented at this time. Superintendent Stenvik, do we see anyone there?
Uh, no, I do not, Madam Chair.
Pandemic and a blizzard will do that. So, we appreciate everyone though who's joining us online right now and watching it on Zoom. We'll move on to the consent agenda, which contains the personnel report and minutes from the October thirteenth, twentieth, and twenty-seventh meetings. Can I get a motion to move that forward?
I moved.
Molly, second?
Second.
Holla, thanks, any discussion on those? All right, roll call vote, please, Molly.
Severson.
Aye.
Larkin.
Aye.
A Samurai.
Aye.
Palmer.
Aye.
Lewis, aye.
All right, motion carries. We'll move on then, uh, tonight we have just discussion items, uh, no action items on our agenda. So we will move on first to reports from members of the board. And normally I, you know, I dictate this, but does anyone want to go first? I know it's always stage fright, right?
I have.
John, there it is.
I have nothing to report.
All right, thank you, John.
I can go now.
Thanks, Holla.
So I've been talking to a lot of constituents about board stuff before the elections.
Yes, thank you. Molly.
Thanks, Natty. I've talked to several community members as well, attended some football games, some volleyball games. And I also checked in with our athletic director about the Minnesota State High School League, um, listening session. Unfortunately, I had a sick child and wasn't able to listen in. But he didn't have any major updates, nothing that we didn't already know about. And that's it, thank you.
Yeah, thanks for looking into that. Laura.
Um, well, let me see, I attended the Subcommittee on Policy prior to this meeting. I also intended the monthly meeting for Northeast Metro nine sixteen. That we had an update on the learning models and where we were for readiness for, um, for making sure that, um, the various programs were on track for, uh, you know, either to do some sort of in-person. Especially with some of these students, they really need a little bit more attention. The, the distance learning doesn't work quite as well for them. So we're on track with most of the programs. There are still some issues with making sure that we're ready with personal devices and, you know, to be able to meet capacity. Right now, we have capacity, but when we have onsite, um, they may lose their, um, they may not have access to like a parent's computer or something that they're presently using. So we're still waiting for thing, you know, for as everybody is, the, uh, the Chromebooks and, um, devices. But I, I believe we should get that resolved pretty quickly. There was a slight change to our board calendar dates. We're actually going to postpone, um, the December second meeting, which is our normal meeting, and we're going to have that, um, on, uh, excuse me, is it December, yeah, December second, we're going to have our meeting on the fourteenth instead. Because that is the same time as the delegate assembly for MSBA. Other than that, I really don't have anything else to report, thank you.
All right, thank you, Laura. As for me, I was also at the Subcommittee on Policy. I was at the chairmeer, chair meeting prior to this meeting, have had conversations with community members and attended the Association of Metropolitan, uh, School Districts Board Meeting. We got a review of kind of changes in the state, uh, government structure, um, who, who are new candidates, who, and updates on the races and how they imagined that that would change or not change the legislative landscape, uh, for the next couple of years. We also talked about the state potentially encouraging the state to show some flexibility in different areas and gathering groups to, um, discuss the ways that might be important to our district. So it was interesting to hear from other districts, um, about what their priorities were, uh, when it came to flexibility and dealing with, you know, all of twenty twenty, pretty much. So that is my update. Superintendent Stenvik, do you have an update?
Chair Severson, yes, I do. In addition to the MSBA regular meeting, the Minnesota School Board Association also hosted a Zoom meeting with Governor Walz, the Commissioner of Health, and the Commissioner of Education, uh, which I was able to participate in. They discussed the new executive order twenty ninety-four, um, also the rising case rates of COVID-19. Basically, many of the items that the governor shared, um, with the state of Minnesota today in his press conference. So I did appreciate, um, them taking the time to meet with school district, school superintendents and school leaders and school board members across the state of Minnesota. I do continue to meet weekly with metro area superintendents. And last week, the Deputy Commissioner of Education Heather Mueller spoke with the group. Also about the, the new executive order and the, these meetings are held weekly, um, basically due to the pandemic. And it really provides a space to ask questions and share ideas and, and positive practices across the districts. So it's, it's time very well spent. I met with local seven-ten teacher union president as part of our regular check-ins. And although the major topic of discussion is COVID-19 these days, the district administration is also finding bright spots. So teachers working together in professional learning communities, um, because of this kind of virtual environment and the way that the schedules are this year, um, teachers are more, are, have that flexibility and they're able to meet together and really dig deep in instruction. So that's very exciting. And then we're continuing with our commitment to equity as well. And so, for example, this Thursday and Friday, staff will be participating in professional development that will cover a variety of topics, including equity, avid instructional strategies, and the effective use of technology. And lastly, I would like to wish member Laura Palmer a very happy birthday.
You beat me to it. I have a big note on my notes here, Laura's birthday. Way to go, happy birthday, Laura Palmer.
Oh, thank you, I thought I was going to get through the meeting.
Oh, no, imagine the cookie that would be sitting there for you if we were.
You know, I have been managing the, you know, imagining the cookie and I missed it this year.
Uh, yeah, I'm sure there would be some sort of cookie or something there for you on your birthday, so. We appreciate you spending your birthday night with us, I guess, given the, the weather and the current state of everything. It's probably not the worst way you could spend a birthday.
I completely agree.
All right. All right, so yeah, we'll move on to, uh, building vision, uh, card from North Park Elementary with Executive Director Mamway and Principal Sausage.
Let me adjust my light here a second. Okay, okay. Members of the board, Superintendent Stenvik, Chair Severson, thank you for having us this evening. Bondo, I believe you're up?
Yeah, I'm just getting my presentation situated here. There we go. Chair Severson, members of the board and Superintendent Stenvik, I am here with, uh, Principal Jeff Sausage to present the North Park Elementary School Building Vision Card. Our mission in Columbia Heights is to create worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed. All of our core values will be, uh, embedded in the presentation tonight. And this presentation is information update only and no governance questions. And since last year is completed, we are happy to present to you our strategic roadmap that covers strategic direction A, B, C, and D. And with that, I will pass it on to Principal Sausage.
Good evening again. So this will be a little bit different this year, um, just like everything's a little bit different this year. Because, uh, our measurements are not going to be as precise as they were in the past. Due to not, uh, being in school the last ten weeks of school last year and quite honestly, not having things as, as well figured out as we do now. So, um, looking at, uh, staff participation in health and wellness, professional development, um, we were at the vision there, that was a hundred percent. As, uh, our, we offered three different PD sessions focused on trauma. Staff were, uh, required to, uh, to, to go to at least two. And, uh, and, and actually, I think just about everyone went to all three. And so that's a A one point five, and actually, I'm going to back up to A one point four, uh, the mental health screener. Um, one hundred percent of our students at North Park and actually in all of our elementaries, um, are screened for mental health by their, um, by their homeroom teacher. We have, uh, what is the gold standard of, of, uh, of mental health screeners for, for elementary kids? And so, um, we, we do our best, um, it's, it's not perfect, um, but we do, uh, catch an awful lot of kids that do, uh, need some extra supports and we have an awful lot of supports in place to help them, far more than I know we had ten years ago. Go ahead, Bondo. School climate, um, this is one we're really proud of and, and, and I'm pretty confident that this, uh, these data here are not, uh, skewed because of, uh, the last ten weeks, uh, in distance learning, because we really, um, with the help of our, our Dean of Students, Nathan Meyer, who was actually the administrator in charge of, uh, of our discipline response at the district level last year. We, with his help, we really focused on, on lowering, um, uh, student time out of class. So we had, it looks like twelve out-of-school suspensions, um, and seven in-school suspensions. Because we found, um, that in-school suspensions, um, really can be every bit as, uh, as difficult for kids to weather as out-of-school suspensions as, as far as instruction is concerned. And one of the things we're actually really looking forward to bringing back with us from this distance learning, um, is really students never really being suspended again. Because even if a student does have to stay home for one reason or another, um, they will have a device with them and they will, uh, be able to, uh, to do their, their instruction with, with their classmates. And so there are a lot of things that we're learning this year, um, that we know are going to improve us, uh, once we're back to normal. Go ahead, Bondo. Okay, personalized learning, um, this is something that's always been, uh, a, a strength at North Park. Regardless, though, you always have some folks that, that are, we'll, we'll say late adopters. And, and while we were at seventy-five, uh, less than seventy-five percent of our, uh, of our staff were utilizing, um, Seesaw every day. Well, distance learning changes that. We have one hundred percent of our staff that are now using Seesaw. And actually, um, one of our staff people who did not learn how, did not even have a Seesaw account until last March, ended up being our third most frequent user, um, of Seesaw by the end of the year last year. And so that's something that, that we like to, we like to often share. And then looking at our, uh, AMATH, A reading and, and our FAST, uh, data from last year, it was our goal, um, that seventy-five percent of our kids would meet their targets by the end of the year. We didn't have assessments at the end of the year, um, so, uh, we are pretty pleased, though, that we were in the progressing range at winter. So sixty to sixty-nine percent, actually, I believe that the number was sixty-six percent, um, of our students were meeting their growth targets, uh, using that measure. Um, and then for the math facts, B two, uh, point eleven, um, we did not do our math facts assessment at the end of the year last year. That was just not something that, that was our focus when we were at distance learning at the end of the year last year. Communications, um, I think one, one of the things that, that parents may rue, being a part of, of Seesaw and then now being able, uh, the principal being able to have a, a whole community, uh, messages, is there's a lot of that going on. This year even more so than last year. I think that principal communication is always something that, that I try to use with precision. And, uh, and last year, uh, we were at the vision and this year, um, I would say we're probably quite a bit above that because, um, those sorts of communications are far more necessary in our current climate. And we have almost one hundred percent of our families, um, enrolled in Seesaw, um, and we have one hundred percent of our teachers using Seesaw. Family engagement, we barely eked in last year because some of our biggest, uh, events, um, are in the last ten weeks of the year. So we did have write-on eight, um, um, non-athletic and academic and achievement-based, um, family engagement activities. And this year, uh, we're actually, our, um, our, uh, family engagement team is getting together on the seventeenth because we're going to put together a series of virtual events, um, because we still want to have many of those events that, that have become a tradition, um, at North Park. And we don't want those to, to take a year off. As far as the percentage of families visiting Seesaw at least one time per week, um, that also is really close to, to a hundred percent. And our families attending conferences last year, we were at ninety-four percent. The elementary's are usually quite high, um, in that. And I'm actually really curious, uh, our, uh, second, uh, round or, or we, our first round of conferences are right in the middle right now. We had our first night last week and our second night is tomorrow. I'll be very curious to see how attendance was, uh, doing them on Zoom. It feels to me that it should be far more convenient for parents, um, so I'm hopeful that, uh, that we get even closer to a hundred percent there. And, uh, we are at vision again with athletics and activities participation. Encore, uh, makes that, um, very, it's very simple for us to get, to get to the vision with, with Encore and our participation there. So improving outcomes by reducing variability. So our, one hundred percent of our teachers use common planning time, um, and, and that's, this year, it's, it's even better because we have common planning time across the district, um, which will be something that'll be fun to talk about next year in this meeting. And our teachers are using, um, uh, grade-level curriculum, uh, that's aligned with grade-level standards every single day. And as far as annual variation from established budgets, I would never think of going over budget, so we're, we're at vision on that one. So looking at literacy goals, that, that's another thing that, uh, that, you know, w- w- we didn't know, uh, what we know now in August of two thousand and nineteen. So, uh, it was our goal that seventy-five percent of our students would meet their expected growth, um, in reading, uh, by using A reading as the assessment. But we were not able to give the A reading, um, at the end of the year last year. We have given the A reading in the fall, um, this year, to give you a little preview. And we are not, uh, we're not terribly confident that, that the, the data are valid. Looking at, uh, last year's fall scores compared to this year's fall scores, so, um, we are actually, uh, have switched, um, our goal midstream to using CBMs, uh, because that's something our teachers can deliver. And last year, uh, over seventy-five percent of our students, uh, would meet their expected growth goal on DreamBox. And, um, again, that was one, uh, that we weren't able to measure at the end of the year. And this year, um, to give you another preview, we're not using DreamBox at all, we're using a different intervention, um, that is, uh, more teacher involved. So, uh, we moved our math goal, uh, to be measured by AMATH, again, this year. So we're very, um, excited about using A reading and A math as our assessment because, especially when we're in person, um, we think they give us outstanding data. Bondo, if you'd like to, uh, click on the picture there, um, this is going to be the first viewing of the North Park, um, ribbon-cutting video. Okay, we don't have sound, Bondo. Just have to click on the checkbox to share sound. Okay, are you all seeing my presentation now? Okay. Let's try it from my computer, see if we have any more luck. We can play it from the control room, might, I can kick it off if you stop, if you stop sharing. Yep. Oh, sorry about that, I actually even touched it before the meeting.
Seems about right for twenty twenty.
I have loved seeing the new renovations. It has been so amazing to be able to walk around and see a place that I've worked for twenty years for, for the first time. It's like seeing it through the excitement of a child's eyes. We've always had the best families, the best staff, the best kids in the world, and now I feel like we finally have a space and a building that gives them what they deserve. The playground is amazing. It takes our environmental focus and turns it into a place where the kids can interact and play and explore. And anybody who has been in the building has come and looked at it and there's a tear in our eyes, we just can't believe how wonderful it is. I'd like to thank the voters for voting yes. I finally feel like now we have a space that our students deserve, a place that is going to be equitable for them and their needs, a place where they can explore, work together, collaborate, and truly enjoy learning.
We all end up at the same middle school and high school and a lot of these renovations, including the art room spaces, were done before throughout our district. So North Park students were not starting their art career with the same space and time and, um, material access that the other students in the district had. And so now that we have a kiln and now that we have more storage space and more sinks, we're able to bring them a more equitable education to the rest of the district.
All the special ed, uh, classrooms have been renovated or newly created. My room was completely renovated and I have a lot more access to technology throughout the room. I don't just have to stay in one place. The, the learning spaces are adjusted for their level and every special ed room has their own sensory room. So if you have students that need to find a place so they can, uh, reconfigure themselves and get themselves back on track, they can go in there and the lights can change and there's sound in there and it's just a really secure, well-thought-out space to be used in multiple different ways.
Our new renovations that we've done have helped to create some new learning studios for our third graders, our fourth graders, and also given some expanded community space for our second graders as well, so they can start to kind of practice what a learning studio looks like. And it really helps to allow not only for collaboration among students, but also among teachers as well because they're working in the same learning space, um, sharing materials, sharing students. And it allows for students to easily go between different teachers and get their needs met, um, by whoever they need to work with. So maybe there's a teacher with more expertise in an area and so students might get to work with them a little bit more easily than if they were in kind of a self-contained classroom.
I am so excited about the renovations that have gone on insider building. They are spectacular and they're going to allow for so many learning, learning opportunities. But I am equally, maybe even more excited about the outdoor education that can now happen. Outdoor education should be an opportunity for all students. It's vital that we learn to be outside and we learn from nature. On the other side of our building, we had a parking lot many years ago. That parking lot has now become a habitat. It's going to be a wetland and what a great classroom to have outside a wetland to actually visit.
This is a project that, that we've been dreaming of and designing for almost ten years. And, uh, finally it's come to fruition. And I think one of the things that, that is most impressive about all of this is how well it fits with both the needs of our children, um, but also allows us to look ahead. The way that this came about, you know, there, there's always been a need at North Park to improve our building, our facility. Security was an issue, um, and now we have, you know, it's security that's in parity with the rest of the district. But from a curricular standpoint, as we started rewriting our curriculum, uh, to have more of a STEM focus and more of a collaborative focus, the nature of the building kept standing in our way in, in, in our ability to be able to, to expand on that curriculum. And a couple of examples of that are, we are going to have a biodigester. We've had a, a very strong recycling and, um, and composting program for many years now. And we're now, instead of, uh, having all of our compost being hauled away and burning diesel fuel to get it to a compost pile, we're going to be feeding our compost into a biodigester, um, which after twenty-four hours, um, then is, it turns, turns that compost into fuel, um, for our boiler system. And so our garbage is actually going to be, um, heating our building, um, come wintertime. And we've been able to add, uh, solar panels also. We had sixty kilowatts, but now we're going to have eighty-four kilowatts. And, and that's not just, you know, it's, it's wonderful that we're green, but, um, we're actually building curriculum around that.
In two thousand and seven, I had my first experience with Columbia Heights Public Schools when I walked my kindergartner into the front doors of North Park Elementary School. We were greeted by a warm staff who took great care of my kids. And subsequently, I had three kids make it through North Park Elementary. One thing I did notice is that the quality of the building didn't match the quality of the education or the staff there. One thing I did notice is that the quality of the building didn't match the quality of the education or the staff there. And so when it became obvious that we needed to do something about the building, we dug deep. And so we asked the community and the community partnered with us. We've got this opportunity to provide a space and a location that works to meet the educational needs of the kids in our community.
Construction projects like the remodel and additions at North Park Elementary can't be done without strong collaborative partners. I'd like to first and foremost thank the community for their strong financial support of these projects. I'd also like to thank Carl Sanderson, Cunningham Group and Hulberg Engineering for their strong collaborative efforts. Together, we were able to build spaces that will meet the needs of our current students and the learning needs of future generations of students at Columbia Heights Public Schools.
On behalf of Columbia Heights Public Schools, I would like to thank the community for their support of the North Park Elementary School remodel. This remodel and project will allow us to increase our expectation when it comes to educating the children at North Park Elementary School.
I am so thankful that we now have these wonderful spaces for our students to use. They're safe, they're bright, they're clean. I'm just so excited to get students into the building so that they can actually enjoy them as well.
Really want to thank our community, our voters for making this possible. It's just really a wonderful place to be.
I'm so proud of everyone that's involved with this. I'm so excited to get to bring the students in and to watch their discovery. Thank you, community here at North Park. And beyond that, this is a great space. I hope that you can come and see this for yourself for all that you have given to this community. Thanks a lot.
Well, it's a it's a long one, but I don't know what I would have taken out. This is very well done. I guess with that, are there any questions?
I don't have a question, but I do have a comment. And it is a beautiful video. It could have gone on another five minutes and I tears are flowing. I'm so happy to see this done and I'm so grateful to the community and all of the hard work that everybody put into making this happen. It's it is, it is so much nicer and so much better than 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 I than I dreamed that it could possibly be. And it couldn't have been done without the passion and the commitment of of so many people. And thank you and enjoy.
Laura, thank you because I think that you were one of the staunchest supporters from the very beginning. I can't remember being in a meeting with you where you didn't say at least once, what about North Park? And so I really do appreciate that drive.
Yeah, we want to just thank you, Principal Sasek, for your leadership. I know the transition was not easy in the midst of a building remodel and pandemic. There were a lot of plates spinning and I want to thank you for your leadership. And and obviously I have a personal investment and heart for North Park as I do all schools. But it's fun to see that space, though my kids won't obviously go to school there. They're a little older than that now. It's so fun to see this space. I cannot wait to see the kids in it. You know, days come and it won't be forever, but to see them really enjoy it. And I want to thank too the the taxpayers of Columbia Heights and Southern Fridley and Hilltop for the contributions they've made to make this project possible.
Agreed. It's a fantastic place and and thank you all for every single person in this meeting played a significant role in making it happen. So thank you. Before I take off, this is Superintendent Stenbeck. I hope I hope the last school board presentation I'll have for a little while. So I wanted to say a couple of words about John Larkin and to thank John for for his service. You know, 17 years ago, when when I when I came to North Park, one of the very first parent phone calls I got was from John. Justin was in first grade. And, you know, it quickly spawned a very excellent working relationship and quite honestly friendship. And one thing that that I will always remember, John, is that your leadership and and your like iron backbone guided us through some of our toughest times in this district and in this community. You're a true community leader and a true school leader. And I thank you very much for everything that you've given to our district and everything that you've given to North Park. And I hope that this doesn't preclude you from being our fire safety expert at the grill at the future of North Park Barbecues. And and I would be remiss if I didn't comment on that's a really fine looking shirt you're wearing there.
I'm sure it's a North Park shirt.
Thank you, Jeff. That's that's very nice. And thank you for not bringing up what the topic of that was, the first phone call was. So and we were able to to develop a friendship and a relationship. Thank you. Very nice things that you said about me. Appreciate it.
Well deserved.
All right. Any other questions or comments on the North Park scorecard? We'll get to John Larkin another time, but thank you, Jeff, for sharing that.
Real quick, Patty?
I think I think I'm frozen. All right, am I back here?
You're back.
Okay, excellent.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. There you go. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to echo, not to be a broken record, but just a huge thank you to the voters. When we had an opportunity to go and visit North Park, it was just incredible. And I think that the voters are just going to be so happy, the students are going to be happy and especially the teachers as well. A huge shout out to Carl Sanderson, the design and everything and the construction that was done, the specialist rooms and then also the special ed. And I just, the programs that they have there, I'm so happy for the students that will have those spaces. And I cannot tell you how much that will help their education. So again, just a huge thank you for everyone that collaborated on this. It's incredible.
All right. Let me try to get back to my Zoom. Thank you, Director, Executive Director at Niang Way and Principal Sasek for joining us tonight. We will move on to Strategic Direction C, Improving Our Students' Daily Lives, Students, Families and Community. And this will be Executive Director Niang Way and Director Stunkel.
Good evening. Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Stenbeck. I'm here this evening with Executive Director Niang Way to present the Strategic Direction C. Our mission for Columbia Heights Public Schools, creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed. This evening with our presentation, we believe that you will see all of our district's core values presented. Community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage and innovation. This is an informational update. There are no governance questions. So this evening's presentation is our Strategic Direction C, Improving Our Daily Interactions With Students, Families and Community. The district operational plan metrics, we received input from community, staff, students and parents. And we determine areas of focus for our continuous improvement. Last year, the 2019-2020 year, school year was the baseline year for this strategic direction. So I'll start off and what you'll notice is that we've got the the years represented on the different areas. So C 1.1 Annual Communication Survey. So in fiscal year 19, we were at the high concern level. Last year, we did not do the annual communication survey because we, if you all remember, we did that extensive communications audit. And so because we did that, we did take the last year where we didn't do the annual communication survey. We will be doing that again this spring. So we'll have data next year for that. But the the survey was it was different kinds of scoring, so we couldn't really squeeze it into this this line. C 1.2 Analysis of Social Media Engagement, Facebook, our superintendent's Instagram account, Twitter and posts on YouTube. We kept it at the vision level from last year and this year. Our C 1.3 Points of Contact pushed out to internal stakeholders by the Communications Department. That also continues at the vision level as does the points of contact with external stakeholders by the Communications Department. In terms of the submitted press releases to the media. So in fiscal year 19, we had 11 or more press releases. This past year, we had eight press releases or more submitted. However, what we did was we created more direct routes to communicate to the community the various things happening in our district. And then also in terms of the number of press releases that actually got printed, that was a decrease from the previous year. We're down to about three press releases printed per month. You might remember that some of our local newspapers have been consolidated. And with that consolidation, there's simply less, less space that that gets shared with what's happening in Columbia Heights Public Schools. So that accounts for that change. That's really something that's out of our control. And now I'll pass the presentation on to Executive Director Niang Way.
Thank you, Director Stunkel. Under C 2 Family Engagement, C 2.1 Parents Registered For Online Tools, CSO and Others. At the elementary level, when we compare FY19 to FY20, we have moved from progressing to vision. And it's really been nice to see that at the elementary level, CSO is highly utilized by our families. And under C 2.1 Parent Registered For Online Tools, Parent View and Others. At the secondary level, we've actually, we've seen a small progress. So we went from intervention to high concern. And so we're currently investigating the underlying reason why we are so low compared to the elementary and trying to find ways that we can have more parents logging on. In looking at the data, we're actually saying that it's one third of our parents at both the middle school and the high school who are registered for Parent View. And and so we, we are very interested in making progress. So next year, we'll see where we end up. And under C 2.2, Parent Participation on Online, on the online survey, climate survey, we saw a decrease from FY19 to FY20. So went from high concern to intervention. And upon investigation, one of the comments that was made was that the climate survey was long and it was taking parents a long time to complete. And so we've taken that feedback to be able to adjust so that we can get more participant in the climate survey because it gave us good data. And finally, under C 2.3 Parent Sense Of Connectedness And Engagement, we stayed the same. So we had the progressing and in FY19, we were at progressing. And so overall, our Strategic Direction C has moved slightly from about 3.6 to about 3.7 in 2020. And so we're happy to present this data to you. Are there any questions?
Scrolling through, let me know if you have your hand up and I'm not seeing it. All right, doesn't look like we have any questions. Thank you so much for your time tonight and letting us know about Strategic Direction C, right from the comfort of your own home.
You are welcome.
All right. Have a good night.
Thanks.
We will then move on to our Special Education Update given by Dr. John Frye, Director of Special Education.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Severson, members of the board, Superintendent Stenbeck. I'm John Frye, I'm the Director of Special Ed. And we get, you get to hear a little bit about everybody's favorite topic, special ed compliance. At least it's mine. But our mission here at Columbia Heights is that we're creating worlds of opportunities for each and every learner, all belong and all succeed. And the two areas that I kind of really want to focus on this evening that are specific to the to the topic is excellence and integrity. We are doing our best, expecting our best every day, as well as with integrity, we're doing what's right even though no one is watching. And so this evening, the school board will be informed. Special education formal notification of findings from the completed MDE compliance review from the 2019-2020 school year. Again, this is just informational only. And so just to give you a precursor of kind of what this looks like. I came last year, just when I came last November, I talked about what the review was going to be like. And I'm going to share my scene because apparently I like to talk and you guys like to listen. So I apologize about that. Here we go. I was like, boy, okay. All right, can everybody see that? Can you give me a thumbs up? Is that okay? All right. Can you see that or not? Yes, thank you for nodding your head.
Yes, yes, yes.
All right. So again, I'm not going to go back because that would be redundant. But as you can see here, MDE has given us kind of a six-year review cycle for the LEs or for Columbia Heights. And this is our Minnesota Continuous Monitoring Improvement Process. The 1920 school year, last school year, we had our MDE review. This school year, at least what we're supposed to be slated for is self-correction. And then those free years are kind of times where we continue to work on instruction and what's best practices for students without MDE coming out and kind of giving us some self-correction or us having to do a self-review. So we finished that in 2020 and or at least I should say in this June. And we got our formal findings in June. And so what did the review consist of that we did last year? We had a student record review that Marcia and I, along with our staff, reviewed a select group of students and submitted that information to MDE. We also had online interviews from educational assistants, our teachers, administrators, myself and a variety of different other stakeholders, generalized teachers as well, to kind of get a picture of what special ed looks like here in Columbia Heights. And finally, we had the opportunity to spend four days with our compliance monitor in March of 2020, about a week we can have prior to the governor's announcement with COVID on March 13th. So it was really good timing and fortunate that she was able to come in and spend some time in Columbia Heights and to observe and to talk to teachers and talk to staff. But I wanted to say this year is supposed to be our self-correction time, but we do not have any self-correction. So I put this in bold and I apologize about that. But we have no corrective action plans from our MDE review. Just to give you a little context, the last time we had an MDE review in 2012, 2013, we had 17 corrective actions to complete. And so we've gone from 17, seven to eight years ago to zero. Again, and that's a testament to the work of our staff and the commitment they have to students. And so some of the highlights that at the monitor noted, and as you can see here, there's a picture of our Victory Program. They are socially distanced. If you can see on the floor, we have tape there to visual to understand where six feet are. Specific to that is also the Victory Mountain. And you see many of the students are on platinum and gold and they're working their way towards learning those skills and internalizing those skills. But she noted about the Victory Program, she really liked the physical space, the unique furniture, the academics that were happening, as well as kind of the repurposing of the seclusion room into a more sensory sensory space that had great lighting and some great tools as well. She also noted she liked the anchor program and the staff as well as the actual physical space. And some of the stuff that we've been implementing, the Sunday implementation for literacy, the STAR Curriculum for Students with Autism that we're implementing in early childhood, as well as the Autism Navigator, which is some training we've been doing with our staff, both our EAs as well as our teachers. So they have this tools in their toolbox to best meet the needs of the students. Also our restrictive procedures, which means it's where we have to report if we're physically having to hold a child because they're hurting themselves or others. That's gone down the last two years. So that's again, a testament to our student, our staff being very proactive and building those skills in students. Some other highlights that she noted is that our co-teaching math and English at the secondary level, both at CA and at the high school, was something she was really impressed by. The picture here is our PACE Lab, which stands for Practical Assessment Exploration System. Space, again, we've got a space here, you can see the boxes and people work through 185 people, students work through 185 skills and kind of things to look at, what are they really good at? What do they like? And then what is the next step in regards to going to Century College, looking for careers and jobs and what have you? So it's a really nice space. So it's a really nice space. She was really impressed by that and that implementation too. She also noted the DCD spaces with centuries with really good visuals. She really liked that. And then finally, the staff, which I think is great to hear from what she's seen in her four days, both as well from the interviews, is that they positively collaborate and share resources, which is a great thing to see that teamwork of our special ed staff. I wanted to end with just two quotes from our formal findings back that we got in June with public on the MDE website. But the, the one thing that she noted and that the, that MDE noted was that, and I'm going to read this. "The administration and special education staff is commended for its commitment to providing compliance services to children with disabilities and their families. The Division of Compliance and Assistance appreciate the efforts that resulted in this exemplary outcome." And I think that, that's a good testament to our staff. And then finally, I wanted to note this last paragraph of our, of our findings here, where she said that the Minnesota Department of Education commends Columbia Heights Public School District for demonstrating compliance with the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, IDEA, in corresponding state statutes and rule. "The district's demonstration of its ability and commitment to implementing special education programs that meet or exceed minimum requirements is reflective of its administration, teachers, staff, and community. MDE appreciates all of its, all the district's efforts on behalf of children with disabilities and their families." And I just wanted to say, that's a testament to, one, the school board for leaving into special education and asking questions. But it's also a testament to our staff. We're working really hard to support students and to do what's in the best interest of them to ensure that they're getting a free and appropriate education. And I also think it's a testament to our students who are working really hard and learning a lot. So my last slide is just congratulations to the E21 Special Education Team. We don't have a corrective action plan at all. We've got, we do really good work. It's good to, one, know that, but it's also to have MDE note that, that we do exemplary work and that we should be proud, which we are. Thank you.
All right. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
I have a comment. Thank you so much for really providing an amazing educational experience for these students who really need these extra supports. It is wonderful to see that there is no findings. I'm sure you have lots of more wonderful things coming in the future. And these kids are going to benefit, are benefiting so much from this collaboration and these new spaces. And that's just gonna, they're, they're just going to have better outcomes. And that's what we're here for. And I think that this is a shining example of what, of when we can really make a difference. And thank you. Thank you so much.
I agree, Laura. Thank you.
I'm looking for hands, but it's hard because I'm just kind of scrolling between y'all. Let me turn it on to this different view. Well, I've been told, a little birdie has told me, Dr. Fry, that it is extremely rare for school districts to come up with no findings. Is that?
You are, you are correct. I've worked in Stillwater, 287, 916, Hopkins. We all had findings. We all, I've been a part of working and getting that information. This is very rare. I will have to admit, I was, when I came in April to do our special ed department conversation, I, yeah, my mindset was we're going to have a finding because you always have a finding, right? My experience in four or five different school districts, you're having a finding. And to, to have that in June was, one, both a relief, because then we didn't have to spend a lot of time correcting some of the stuff that we were already doing and that we corrected, but also we could really focus and kind of dig down more on those best practices for instruction, which we really want our staff to be focused on. So it is very rare, at least in my experience. And I don't know if that's about me, because it's always, I'm always in a corrective action plan everywhere else, but you know, or not. But I would say it's probably a testament to our work, the work of our students and our staff. But I also want to, two things, thank you for bringing this up. I also want to thank Barb Erickson and Marcia Walker. They did a lot of coordinating and a lot of kind of making sure we had everything in place for MDE. A shout out to them because they worked really hard, supporting staff, and Marcia did a whole lot of work. So, and Barb was helping with that coordination with the part of MDE. So shout out to them specifically too. But it is very rare, and I'm going to stop talking.
Well, congratulations to you and your team and the kids and all the teachers and staff that make this possible. Any other board members want to chime in or ask any questions? Molly, I see that hand.
Yeah. You know, I'm trying to be quiet here because I know people don't want to hear me talk all the time. But honest to goodness, as a parent that has gone through ECSE all the way up to the transition program, your staff deserve just the hugest shout out right now, teachers, administration, and EAs. I really think that the EAs are at the core of a lot of the educational outcomes that we see. And just thank you for your leadership and everything. I'm so glad that this worked out for you guys, that you don't have any findings because again, you have great programs. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you so much, Dr. Fry, for your presentation and your time.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to the ever exciting world of bids with Director Henneken's. This one is the high school area separation bids.
Thank you, Chair Severson, members of the board, and Superintendent Stendick. This evening, I have the first bid of many coming forward, I think. Columbia Heights High School Area Separation Bid. This is a project for next summer. Again, our mission, creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed. And the focus, core values in this presentation of excellence, collaboration, and integrity. And this evening, this is not, there's no governance this evening. This is just an informational presentation. Governance will, this will be brought to the school board as an action item on November 27th, regular school board meeting. So what we're looking at here is the, kind of the outline of the high school building. And this was discussed previously when I brought the, this to the school board for authorization to go out for bid. When we added on the band room to the high school, it was an addition to the building. And there was some code, codes that the building wasn't meeting. And we were grandfathered into those codes. And now, as we added onto the building, we were required by the state to bring that, the building up to code. And one of those codes was that our building couldn't exceed a certain square footage amount without a firewall separation. So it's just a, it's a separation between sections of the building that creates, you know, a fire barrier. So those walls typically are two R rated wall, and then that also includes the doorways. And, and so there's a separation that's required. And then the highlighted in the green, you can kind of see we have a building one, building two. There's, there's different, that was just architects working with the design and just to differentiate each section and the total square footage. The highlighted areas in green are, are the lines in green are the areas where we have to ensure that that wall has a two R fire rating to meet code. And then ones in black are ones that already exist. So as we're looking down here at the bottom, this, the screen here is actually the, the wall that would go up through the main office. That's, that's kind of our biggest area of, of expense and construction is that wall has to be a fire separation wall. So this is the basement level. I know it says ground floor, but it's really the basement level. This is the main floor. As you had turned to the main building. So there's, you see the family center. And within the family center, there's a little work to do there because the separation from the district office, the family center has to be areas of that wall doesn't meet that, that code. And then this is the second floor. So that's what we're looking at. So really what we're mostly doing is, is we're adding doorways in the hallways and those doorways. Maybe they already exist, maybe they don't, but they don't have that fire rating that we need them to have. And then it's, it's any penetrations through those walls. You know, whether it's a conduit going through for cabling or a pipe that goes through the wall, there just has to be appropriate caulking around that. So that's, that's kind of what the whole project is. And again, that office area in the front is kind of that biggest area because that whole wall of that main door entrance into the office of the high school has to be redone. And any glass that we, we put in has to be fire-rated glass. So that's kind of the biggest part of that project. So bids came back and they came in actually really good. So when we additionally originally approached this project, one of the requirements that we had for the state was that we had to complete this by July 1 of 2022. And our project estimate cost at that point was $650,000. You can see the three scopes of work here add to significantly less than $650,000. So bids came in very good. So our work scope for the main part of the project, apparent low bidder, Construction Results Corporation, the base bid of $219,690. And then the mechanical section of United States Mechanical at $91,300. And then Musco Electric for our low voltage. Again, everything that we do with these hole opens for the doors and stuff is all, has to tire it back into the fire panels. So that's all the cabling that goes along with that and a bid of $47,265. So again, this will come to the board as it's an action item at the next regular school board meeting for approval. And we will take any questions at this point. And actually a letter of, sorry, I forgot to include that there's a letter of recommendation from Carl Sanderson. We're working with Carl Sanderson on this as this really is an extension of, of the band room addition or the, the construction project that was just completed this, this last school year. And they're going to help us manage this project. And so there's a letter attached in the board packet recommending these, these low bidders.
I was going to channel my, channel my inner Lauren and ask if we knew, if we, if these are trusted vendors, but you, you beat me to it. Do you have any other questions? And this will be a governance item at the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Any other, any questions, comments? All right.
This is Laura. I'm, I'm just really happy to see, you know, I was worried with during this time that any construction project is that we're going to be priced out of where we were supposed to, you know, where we were expecting. So I'm delighted to see it's coming in not only very reasonable, but significantly better than we were, than you were planning for. So that's good. That's, that's good news. Savings to be able to, to be able to do other things with if, if we need to. Thank you.
All right. Other comments, questions? All right. Hearing none. Thank you, Brian. See you back at our next meeting. We'll move on to board topics. If there are topics that board members would like to bring up. Sorry, I just had to switch back to the agenda. So if you're raising your hand, go ahead and talk. There we go. Zoom. Sorry.
I just wanted to wish Laura a happy birthday real quick. I didn't get to do that at the beginning. So happy birthday, Laura.
Yay. Happy birthday, Laura.
Thank you again.
If I had a confetti cannon, I could shoot off into your yard. I would do that. I'd be very cautious of safety whilst doing it. All right. Well, hearing none, we'll adjourn our meeting for today at 8:05 PM. Thanks to everyone who tuned in to watch. See you next time.